Everyone's taken their appropriate medications?
Fine.
Okay. Okay, you guys ready? Okay. This meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance would defy the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call please.
Mr. President.
President.
Chair Clapper.
Present.
Mr. Sanz Lupo and Corporate Credibility.
Public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here that wanted to address anything that is not on the agenda? No, seeing no one, then we will move on to the approval of the minutes for December 5th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing. Procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. At this point, I, we have not received any speaker's forms, so if anyone here is interested in speaking, if they would please pick up one of the forms and fill it out and hand it to one of us, please. Okay, the first item for discussion, first item on the agenda is 612 El Camino Real, APN 050133090. Request for approval of a conditional use permit and architectural review for an outdoor use in the C-S Highway Commercial District subject to the ER District overlay. And apparently, staff will be recommending a continuance to January 25th, 2012, or the Commission will be recommending.
Thank you. Staff does not have anything to add. Just that the applicant is requesting that this item be continued to the January 25th meeting, and I just wanted to note for the public that is a Wednesday night, so it's a special meeting date. And as you recall, previously, you opened the public hearing and continued it, so if you would like to, again, open the public hearing, see if there's any comments, and then continue it to the date specific of January 25th.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak about that? So we were, for 612 El Camino Real, was there anyone here who wanted to speak regarding that project? No? Okay. Then we're, we will be keeping the meeting open. I had one, one request of, of staff, if it was possible, to get some additional information for that meeting. I was interested in seeing what, in writing, the fire department or whoever provides that kind of safety information for projects like this, what specifically was included in their, their report? Okay. Thank you. Did, any comment or questions?
None.
Commissioners? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for the continuance?
Yes. I move to continue the APN 050133090, 612 El Camino Real, request for approval of a conditional use permit to, to be continued to January 25th, 2012, and to leave the public hearin, hearing open.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, item B, 1681-1697 Industrial Road, APN 046-240-040, consideration of an appeal of a zoning administrator approval to modify an existing conditional use permit. Staff report, please.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Gavin Monahan, and I will be taking you through the aspects of an appeal that was filed against a zoning administrator approval to modify an existing conditional use permit for the businesses at 1681 through 1697 Industrial Road, also known as Domenico's Starting from the beginning here for tonight's meeting, the appeal was submitted by Russ and Debbie Margiata, Margiata, they're the owners of a neighboring structure at 1661 Industrial Road. This is the building, we'll get to the maps later, that's between Industrial Road and the freeway closest to the US 101 side, as you're looking at the site map. I'm going to go a little bit back into some history. This project first came in front of you in 2004 as a conditional use permit with a, a request for a variety of uses that were inside of this structure. It's located there with the red arrow. At that point, a variety of entitlements were granted by the Planning Commission, and since that time, there has been some additional entitlements that were granted by staff that were found to be non-significant changes. Those are, those are granted a couple of years later for entitlements. So between 2004 and now, the, the venue is operated with a consortium of types of uses related to wine, winemaking, wine storage. They also had entitlements for a deli, and they do, do some sublet space. These are all things that are, were allowed under the use permit for PM2 or were allowed outright. There's several of those types of things that are allowed outright in the plant manufacturing zoning district. It's now GCI, I just put that up there just for reference because we're in the process of changing over, so the applications in front of you tonight are being reviewed under the old zoning, so you'll see that, but I think it's nice to start talking a little bit about the new zoning and how that affects some of our decisions going forward. The general plan remains the same because it's two years old and we're still under that, and it's planned industrial. The existing land uses around there, or for this particular building, is a multi-use. It has storage, winemaking, special events, there is the entitlement for a deli, a catering kitchen, and then sublet space for, for excess interior areas that the, the property owners have, and the surrounding uses are industrial. At some point in the last couple of years, there had been a complaint that was aired to staff regarding parking impacts and how they affect neighboring businesses. There had also been a complaint that had been shared with the planning staff or with the city that there possibly was illegal dumping on the site. That is something that turned out not to be the case. We sent out county health, they're in charge of looking for illegal dumping and things of that nature, and they determined that there was no, there was no violation. They're very strict with MPDES as far as discharges into creeks and waterways, ultimately into the bay, and there was no citation given and no problems found. So what happened was, an anonymous complaint came in, and that got staff chatting with the property owner about their parking arrangements and the types of uses they were doing, they had an entitlement to operate a winery, delicate test in wine tasting room, wine storage, and special events. Under the original conditional use permit, the special events, the idea was that they'd be limited to a certain amount per month, and specific to that, when, prior to an event being held, the owners of Domenico's would notify staff, let them know that there was going to be a special event, I think with the idea that we could address parking. It's not that practicable, practical, it's not that practical either to address parking on a one-by-one basis. We'd much rather see our conditional use permits and our businesses have the amount of onsite parking that's required for the type of business that they're being entitled for, or to have shared parking agreements or other parking arrangements through either a reduction in parking requirement, a shared parking agreement, or some other such thing. And this, in this case, they did, they had a shared parking agreement with the Circle Star Center, but since that time, it had expired, there's been a change of ownership at Circle Star, and it was really time to look at their use permit basically for parking, that's what we were evaluating it for at the time, how to, to take care of parking impacts that might be, parking overflow that might be impacting the neighbors and causing problems for neighboring businesses, and we typically do that when there's a limited amount of parking on space through a shared parking agreement. So it was the planning manager's decision to have the zoning administrator look at it basically from the shared parking agreement standpoint, to review the new, two new shared parking, formal shared parking agreements that were put in place that would allow the Domenico's Winery to operate their special events. So there's three parking tables in here, and we'll get to them later, but basically, as a standalone business for wine storage, wine manufacturing, wine club, the deli, wine tasting, and those types of things, they have plenty of onsite parking, they're overparked. So those types of uses can happen on an ongoing basis without any restrictions to time or, or activity because there's plenty of onsite parking. Once you have a special event, those tend to draw a lot more people, in this case, they were approved, I believe, up to 250 people, originally 175, and then it was increased to 250, and that, of course, creates a larger parking demand. So that is what the shared parking agreements address. We can go over those more formally when we get to that section. I just wanted to give a little bit of background on the site because I think it makes sense while we have the screen up here and, and provide a little bit of history. Please stop me at any point because it's, this project's been going on for, for six or seven years, so if there's something you would like me to clarify in the, in the historical section, I'd be happy to do so. I have it all in my head right now, which is current, and sometimes I forget to mention things that happened in the past, so. The appeal, so what happened was, in the summer of 2011, we took this hearing to the zoning administrator for the, for the parking, shared parking agreements, and one of the property owners was present at the meeting and had comments about concerns with things like the waste handling at the site for when there's a grape crush, parking overflow, parking spillage into the, possibly onto private property or causing parking impacts, the events themselves, just the fact that there were large events held at the venue, storage and disposal of waste, parking impacts, and there were a few other things mentioned too, like potential for there to be problems with county health or with illegal discharges or things of that nature. Subsequent to that, we've had conversations with county health, there are no reported issues with the county health department, there's no violations on record, and nothing in their file that shows that there's ever been a problem with health impacts or health regulations at the facility, and then the same for the illegal dumping that I discussed a little bit earlier. So this is what the appeal states. And the appeal goes into three specific details that I, I included in the staff report and then did a follow-up just after them. They include the bottling trailer, the appeal references city codes in the plant manufacturing district that require all uses to be conducted in an entirely enclosed building or structure is really what it says. The appellant asserts that the bottling trailer is, is a vehicle and lacks the attributes to be considered an enclosed structure. So previous to this, we had met with the applicants, Domenico's Winery, had a discussion about their bottling trailer. It's stored on the side of the building, it looks like it's on a street side, but it's actually a private alley. It's not unlike East San Carlos Avenue, if you're familiar with the businesses that are along that. It looks like a city street in some ways, but it's really a private, private property in an alley that serves entrances to several businesses. The bottling trailer, as it stands now, faces that, and there were concerns that it wasn't attractive, there was aesthetic issues, that there was manufacturing going outside, which includes hooking up hoses to it, it's where they do the bottling on an infrequent basis, and that there's comings and goings, which are things that we'd expect in that zoning district, but it's on the side of the building, so it probably looks like it's happening in the front yard because that's where the parking is. So it's one of those buildings that's, that's skewed. And so the, one of the concerns with the appeal is that this, this activity, this outdoor manufacturing is not happening inside of a structure, but instead it's in a trailer. Planning staff looked at that and said, well, it's an infrequent use, and the trailer is designed to bottle, which is something that we have very little of in San Carlos, bottle wine. We looked at it as a, as a one-on-one situation and recommended that the bottling trailer be moved to the back of the property and be screened, because it was our understanding at first that it was an impact with aesthetics and the fact that it was on the side alley that it was a nuisance for other businesses, and that moving it into the back of their property on 100% privately owned land, fencing it with a fence to the height that's allowed in the PM2 district would benefit the surrounding property owners by potentially lessening its aesthetic impacts or noise or just the hustle and bustle that happens around it. So that was our first decision, I mean, our first recommendation. Probably the best-case scenario for the bottling trailer for aesthetics or for impacts would be inside the enclosed structure, but there are some changes in our zoning that we can get to that will address the fact that we no longer have prohibitions against outdoor manufacturing, so this is something we can talk about or have you talk about in your, your discussions after I'm done with the presentation. But as a stopgap measure, we just, we asked them to move it to the back of the structure and close it in a fence, and then the operations for the bottling of the wine would be back there. I believe they used it 14 times last year. If I'm incorrect, the applicants are here today and they can, they can be more specific, but it's less than 20 times a year the bottling trailer is used. It's a specific-made item from Italy, it's inside of like a Wells cargo trailer, and the original idea is that they would take it to small wineries as a side business because they're very expensive to purchase, so that's why it's in a trailer and not, not built inside of their structure. That was their original intent. It turned out that it's very difficult to level and very difficult to get certified and difficult to pick up and move, and it's not practical to take it into Bonne Dean and Santa Cruz and Half Moon Bay, so they have not done that, they've left it in on Industrial Road, so. So that is the first section of the appeal, the bottling trailer, and also staff's response in summary. Waste disposal, the appeal states that odor from the debris box can be overpowering or noxious at times, and this is an impact, it could also cause issues with vermin infestation. As a result of this, now prior to tonight's meeting, in the, in the August meeting of last summer, and then also the follow-up meeting in November in front of the zoning administrator, we tightened down the collection schedule for the debris box, so it's 14 to, or it's 24 to 48 hours now, which is, as I see staff reports and conditional use permits, the tightest in the city, it's the shortest timeframe for pickup, and that's because they do a crush in the, in the fall, and grape residue has a tendency to ferment if it's warm out, and so the necessity to having the debris hauled away quicker is important, and so we, you'll find that as one of the conditions, that it's 24 to 48 hours. But really, what we're trying to do is limit any kind of leakage, odors, noxious fumes, or in this case, less vermin. So another option would be a debris storage system that doesn't allow any air out of it, would be an airtight system, and so that would be something that could be a, a functional response to the condition as opposed to having them just take it away every 24 to 48 hours. But in lieu of that design or any information on that kind of a, a technical fix, we have the requirement that it be hauled away in the fall during the grape crush every 24 to 48 hours as a condition. So that tight, that I think shortens the timeframe, I believe it was 48 to 72 or up to five days in one of the original letters from staff. So that had been tightened up during the zoning administrator hearings, and that is also staff's response. Events, the third detail about the appeal were that the CUP does not adequately address parking at the site. Additionally, the appeal states that there isn't sufficient room for shuttle buses, and the off-site parking areas are not used by patrons of Domenico's or would not be used. So if there were shared parkings in existence as there are, they're already legally in existence, that the appellant has concerns that they will not be used by patrons or visitors of Domenico's for their special events, and that they're concerned that there will still be parking on the Margiata's property. So as a follow-up to that, this goes back again about a year, the applicants, Domenico's continued or started to work on their shared, two new shared parking agreements that are in the staff report, one with a company called or firm, property owner ECI2, and another with Albert's LLC. They're both in close proximity to the venue, one is, is across the street, and one is a building and a half over on Industrial Road. The applicants provided to staff very complete and detailed, no parking signs, also a letter that they're going to be sending to participants of where they can park for overflow for large events, and then also a pedestrian-scale map that shows where the shared parking areas are, where it's legal to park, where it's not, and also the safe way to cross Industrial Road, as that was a concern over the summer with the appellant's, that the city would open themselves to liability by allowing a shared parking agreement across the street. These are events that are, our participants are adults, and we didn't, at that time, staff did not have a concern with a shared parking agreement being across the street, as there are many busy streets in San Carlos and people park wherever and cross wherever, and it's just not something that we felt would be a problem. And then, of course, following up with the detailed parking information instructions, no parking signs and pedestrian-scale map that the applicants gave us. So we were satisfied with that. With the shared parking in place, the event is overparked, it has a surplus of parking. So considering onsite parking plus the two shared parking agreements. These are some of the parking tables. I spoke with Chair Clapper earlier today, they are a little complex, and for that I apologize. The first one here is non-event uses. I edited a little bit from your staff report, I hoped to be a little bit more clear, the italics are the parts I added for tonight. These are the things that happen inside the building that, let me look at these, wine tasting, winemaking, these are things now under the new zoning that would not need a use permit, and these are the square footage and the parking requirement under PM2, so we're on both sides of our zoning here, just to give you a little background information, and the total parking required, the technical total parking required. The parking onsite are 40, there's 46 spaces. So under these uses, these, these daily uses of the business, not including special events, they're overparked.
Excuse me, before you move on with that, so can you explain, when the square footage is 800 square feet and the requirement is one parking space per 300 square feet, how do you get 6.4 parking spaces?
You don't, so that's a good typo, that's overparked, sorry. You do not.
Yeah. There are several places in here where in that table where...
I moved an Excel file over here, so let me, let me go through it, and I'll take a look and see if I can...
Okay, because the numbers look like actually they would be required to have a lot less parking.
Yeah. And maybe I can explain it when I go through, but thank you. This is the special events. They have a 10,000 square foot section of the building, it's about, it's about an acre site, and they have about a half acre of building, and about 10,000 square foot of it is dedicated, excuse me, to special events. Sorry that this PowerPoint cut off part of the beginning there. These two here, the Industrial Road, two addresses on Industrial Road are the two locations for shared parking. The special events, when we use the calculation for a restaurant, which is one of the stricter parking requirements in San Carlos, second only to movie theaters, is one parking space required per, one per 125 square feet of restaurant area. So in this case, they would need 80 spaces, and with the two shared parking agreements, they have 59 at 1501 Industrial Road, and they have 36 at 1710 Industrial Road. So for special events, they have a surplus of 15. So the third level of this is, the applicants asked to have special events during the day. They did, they don't have shared parking agreements during the day, because during the day, Albert's LLC and the EMC, or EM2, they have business operations that need their parking from 8 until 5:00 PM. So the shared parking agreements, as you're familiar with, typically happen after hours for businesses that are not open on nights and weekends, and that is the, in case, and that is the case here. So Domenico's was interested in having special events during the day, but they don't have amount of parking to include a special event that would take up their full 10,000 square feet of event center. So what they wanted to do is say, I want, we want to have special events that don't require shared parking that can be done onsite. So a calculation was done in reverse, that they have 26, they have surplus of 26 parking spaces, and so as, when you do the, the percentage of that, they have a requirement of one for 125, and so small events that require less use, less square footage use than 3250 of the event center could happen during the day between 8 and 5 when the shared, shared parking agreements are not in effect. So, and they do have a lot of smaller things, they don't always have 250 people, sometimes they have fundraisers with a, a smaller numbers of, of participants. So the, there's conditional use permit findings, this is a conditional use permit, and the zoning, our zoning under PM2, under the old zoning, allowed the Planning Commission or zoning administrator to find a variety of flexible parking arrangements and shared parking agreements under the code based on entitlements that were being sought by either the zoning administrator or the Planning Commission, and that's why the shared parking agreements come before you tonight. As a result, there's a conditional use permit that's attached to that, that's the entitlement that codifies this, and there are findings to be made in order to approve it, and the conditional use permit findings are in front of you on the screen. And we also have a recommendation, and I'm going to go through, I don't know if you want to look at the map, did you want to look at the overhead maps of the site, Karen? Because I remember we had a discussion about just looking at the map and the location of some of the businesses. I have that, if you want to...
Well, the map at the beginning was, was fine, but...
Yeah, and I created this one...
Yeah.
This afternoon, the yellow section is the Domenico's property, the Margiata property, and it may not be exact because I was using the county's GIS for plotting the ownership of the buildings, is located on this map north of it and closer to 101. The parking, the shared parking agreement at ECI2 is just to the left of that, on the same side of Industrial Road, and then the Albert's shared parking is just on this map south of the Domenico's site and across the street. That, just to orient you, that Circle Star Theater is in the upper right-hand corner, and the hotel is there to the right of Domenico's. This area here, if we can get the cursor to show you, this is a, like a, a back area that Domenico's has, that they are planning to fence for storage, and they have winemaking equipment out there, stainless steel drums and all kinds of things that are needed from time to time for winemaking. The parking for this venue is along here, there is a number of tandem spaces here, not to exceed the allowed, the allowed amount prescribed. We typically want tandem spaces for employees, they don't work quite as well for visitors, they might work for special events, they don't work well for retail or wine tasting or things like that, but they would work for a special event, and they're actually quite, quite useful for employees, tandem parking. So I think these last 12 spaces are tandem, and the rest of the spaces front the building here, they are nose-in spaces at a 90-degree angle to the building. I think the concerns with parking that the Margiatas have were back here, people drive down this road, it's not a cul-de-sac, it wasn't designed to be a city street, so the turnaround is either in someone's private property or you have to do a hammerhead several times to get out. So adequate and efficient signage is very important for these things. I mean, it's, it's very similar to what we have on East San Carlos Avenue when we had questions about parking for some of those businesses, reminds me a lot of that. And so the, the applicants, Domenico's, have worked extensively with the neighbors, having conversations about what types of things they could do to reduce parking impacts and make parking on the site more efficient and less problematic for any neighboring business. The applicants also, they attached some pictures, we could go through them, they weren't labeled, but I can narrate them. These are operations that are happening along that alleyway at Domenico's, it looks like storage of, or movement of wine barrels, there's a forklift here. They store wine inside, they have a refrigerated section of the building that's designed for wine storage through the doors. This is the bottling trailer that has been in discussion, it's a Hallmark, not a Wells Cargo, stand corrected, and inside of it, it has machinery that was manufactured in Italy for bottling wine. Basically, hook up hoses to it and sterilized bottles go in one side, like fed in on a, on a mechanized piece of equipment, and they are filled on the inside and bottled and capped and come out full of wine on the other side. And again, it's infrequently used, this piece of equipment. This is the back of the building that I was discussing, so there's the hotel, 101 would be on the left-hand side of this image, and this is the edge of the Domenico building. This, their intent here is to fence those with a permanent fencing, it doesn't have it, something aesthetic, and then materials could be kept back here behind a fence that was aesthetic and also give them some security. These pictures were actually provided by the appellant, just as a, just to remind you that this looks like a bottling operation, I'm not familiar with it, but I would have the appellant speak to this and also the applicant. And just more pictures of the side of the building, these are dumpsters, I would assume associated with Domenico's, and I think that's a duplicate picture. And then also, the appellant's provided this map, which has information on property lines. Again, there is no public street here, so it goes, property owner here has a property line edge, Domenico's property here, property line edge, and so all the travel, ingress and egress out of, to serve all of these businesses is done over private property. There was discussions at the last zoning administrator hearing as well by the Margiata's legal representation about concerns with buses driving down the private property and how we condition that, and we, at the meeting I spoke, and Brian was present, I believe Greg may have been also, that we don't, we typically don't condition the access on private property, those things are done through agreements, through the title report or through things that are on, deeded to the property as far as how the ingress and egress goes. So when it comes to a conditional use permit or when it comes to drop-off and turnaround, we would encourage them to do that, in areas that were safe and practical to do that. I think buses would make sense to be on Industrial Road. The applicants decided that that made sense, they removed the sign that used to be out on the, the front of the building, down at the ground level, and put it up on top so that there is a curb cut now where you can drive into the front of the building, as you, the part that faces Industrial Road, and then drive out another set of curb cuts or exit through that private property, private ingress, egress access point that's shown on the, on the map in front of you. So that takes me through the points that I wanted to make tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, while you're deliberating, look at the calculations to give you a final number, because it looks like at least one of those was overparked in my calculation, and I'll figure out what happened with that, and I will let you know. But I have a recommendation from staff and also a formal motion should you decide to make a decision tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this point? No? Okay. Okay, we, Dominic Chirichello, did I say that right? Sorry if I stumbled over that.
I guess I'll address bottling trailer first. I prepared some handouts, if, if I can pass them out, if that's acceptable.
Yes, that would be fine.
There's actually photos in there that address... There's actually photos in there that address all three of the appeal issues. The first one is the bottling trailer. There's several pictures of bottling trailers at very large wineries in California here. And mobile bottling lines has kind of become a standard in the wine industry. You know, many small, the mid-sized wineries use them outside on a regular basis. There was a mention about spills, the chance of spills are virtually none. Wine is connected from a tank inside the building, passed to the bottling truck through a pump. There's valves on the hoses that connect to the machine. There's always a person inside the machine. There's a kill switch on the machine. The chances of a spill are pretty nonexistent. As Gavin mentioned, we did agree to relocate the bottling trailer to the back of the property and, you know, put it behind a fenced area that is, that is something you can't see through for stack reasons. And we do not use the bottling trailer on a daily basis. It's used less than 20 days a year. I also provided you with some, there was an issue about noise. I was able to get some decibel readings that were done on January 10th, which I supplied you that along with the town's decibel levels, noise limits. And that's it. That's all I have on the bottling. In reference to waste disposal, we've completed seven crushes at this location. We've used the same method of removal of the pumice. We've used rolled-off dumpsters, usually 15 to 20 yarders. We usually have them dumped within seven days or so. What we, what we're using, the removal and what we put in them is grape stems, fermented skins and seeds that are pressed out after wine is made. We cover it. There's a picture showing the dumpster and how we cover it. We tightly cover it, pretty much to the ground to try to avoid any issues. There's never been any issues with vermin or any of that for the last six years. We have had a meeting with the hazardous waste specialists in the county of San Mateo. We gave them a tour of the inspected, our property, our dumbest and our pumice removal as we have been doing it. They had no issue with it. They liked that. We kept it covered. They said, take precautions for any leakage or spills. We've made some improvements with our dumpster company to make sure that it's a sealed unit because one year we did have a leak issue where there was a hole in the container we didn't realize. So there was a small leak. We contained that and cleaned it up immediately. Most of the remains either goes to a farm over in Half Moon Bay, gets put back into the ground, it's organic waste, or to the landfill. A sealed container is not a good option for us. We dump the waste with a forklift that has rotating forks on it and we use macro bins, which are half-ton plastic bins that you may have seen around wineries, that we put the stems into and/or the grape pumice. And then we dump them into the dumpster, remove the cover, dump them in the cover, recover it. And we have agreed to removing the must within 24 to 48 hours, which is going to quadruple our cost of removal, but we've agreed to it. The last issue is in reference to events and parking. I've supplied you with all the proposed signage along with the map that we've prepared that's actually on our website. We've also, it's part of our events contract. We've included that. So anybody that has an event at our facility, they have to sign that they've received it and it's actually an exhibit in our agreement with them. In reference to using buses, there are several types of buses. There, most buses are eight and a half feet by 24 feet, shuttle buses. Full-size bus is eight and a half feet by 40 feet. We are in an industrial area and our driveway is frequented on a daily basis by delivery trucks as large as tractor-trailer, 18-wheelers. They seem to get in and out without any issues and make their deliveries to Mr. Margiata's tenants as well as myself and other tenants. So I really don't see that the buses are a problem. And there was a request to have an attendant on-site every time there's an event. I think that's an unreasonable request. We have used, and I've also enclosed, a parking valet service and they've done a great job. And that's an option to our customer because it's at a charge of $600-plus, but we recommend it for large events. And, let me see, what else do I have? Mr. Margiata has two parking areas, as per the plan shows. If he has a real concern about anybody parking in him, I mean, we propose to put signs there if he allows us. If it's still an issue, one of his parking areas has a gate. I have no objection to having him close the gate. If he wants, we'll even rope off his other parking area. So it's not accessible during hours when his tenants aren't using the parking area. So we're willing to do that kind of stuff to help satisfy his concerns. And I think that's all I have right now. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me or...
Any questions at this time? Not right now, no. Thank you. Okay, Gloria Chirichillo?
I'll really only put my name up there in case you have some questions for me about the events and whatnot. I can tell you about the large events. I can tell you about that because I'm the one that handles that. I don't remember the exact number, but mostly the large events are on the weekends. We've had very few events that have been 250 people. The other night, we had Apocrates there, 200 people. I don't believe there's an issue after 5 o'clock because we go into the shared parking agreements. So we have more than a surplus there. However, we did give them the option. If they wanted to have valet parking, they could. And Apocrates has the money that they went and paid for precision parking to be there and have a compliment to their guests. I wish all of the corporations would do that. We have very few events. I would, I figured it out once, but I would say it's less than five a year where there could be 200 people in the afternoon. One in particular I know was Shutterfly last year. These are large corporations. They bus people in. We had another one, 145 people at Croy Corp. They bus people in, in the afternoon. So I don't know of any party that we've ever had in the afternoon where there's been 200 cars trying to come to an event at our facility. As far as the bottling truck is concerned and the meetings we had prior to this, we can prove that the bottling truck is not used 365 days a year, that it's used, you know, around 20 times a year because those reports, every time we bottle wine, has to be reported to the feds, to the TTB. So it's on record exactly how many times we use that truck to bottle the wine out of the year. So it is very infrequent. In terms of the noise, if that is the concern about the truck, like we said, we would move it to the back. We would fence it in, which would even set it further away than Mr. Margiata's tenant Siemens, which has front offices. We did the decibel reading and the town's reading for that zoning area is between 70 and 75, heavy industrial, light industrial, 70 and 75 decibels. We did, you saw, I think Dominic gave you that report, that we're below that at the property line, an X amount of feet away from the property line. In fact, the neighbors across from us, our cabinet makers and construction companies, when they do their sawing in their building, their roll-up doors are open and we can hear the sawing going on. And we tested that as well and that's higher than our bottling line. And we only use the bottling line 20 times a year.
I guess that's about all I could add. Okay, any questions? No, thank you. Okay, Charles Ribble, please.
I'm Charles Ribble. I'm with the firm of Fimmel, Jessman and Ribble. And we represent Russ and Debbie Margiata, and Russ is here also. I know we have a limited time here. I don't want to sit and try to go through everything that I put in the letter, but we do have a couple of concerns that I want to highlight. The trailer, what we have, perhaps, perhaps the ordinance that I receive from the city is not up to date, but the one I have specifically says, completely enclosed building. I looked up building in Webster's dictionary and it says, "A roofed and walled structure built for permanent use." I don't know whether the city of San Carlos wants its buildings, a trailer to be equated with that, but what you have here is basically an accommodation, a benefit for one property owner that I don't think you're willing to give to everybody else. It talks about a building. The trailer is not a building. And that, we have a real problem with that. As you've heard, he has 10,000 square feet that he uses for meetings. He's got a building, according to Mr., according to Gavin Monahan, it's over an acre. You saw the size of the trailer. Bottling lines, if you've been to wineries, I mean, I like wine. Mr. Margiata likes wine. I've been to small wineries in Napa and Sonoma and there is a bottling operation for the small winery. It does not take up very much space. What you're doing is basically saying, gee, Mr. Margiata, his plan didn't work the way he wanted to and now he should, for some reason, get an advantage that nobody else has. That is, let's call my trailer a building. And as long as we call it a building, everything's fine. We don't agree with that and we don't think that accommodation should be made. There's no reason for it. At the, in the staff report, they talk about it being temporary. Well, they would like it temporary, but for some reason it isn't. Mr. Margiata said that trailer's been there for years now. Why not just, either they can move the trailer inside or just move, get a bottling operation and use up, what? 500 square feet of their space? Probably not even that. That's 10 by 50. It's maybe 250 square feet of their space. They put the operation inside, then we don't have to worry about anything. Everything is there. If there is a spill, it goes into a drain and I presume the building is, like Mr. Margiata's, where it's connected to the sewer treatment. Something spills outside, it's not connected to sewer treatment. It goes right into the storm drains. Things can happen. My understanding, based on talking to some of the other property owners in the area, is there has been a big push to make sure that the industry in all those areas complies with everything that's needed so nothing is dumped in the bay. And that means at times, some significant expense to the property owners to make sure that they have a self-contained drainage system where there is no opportunity for things to be spilled in the bay. Here, if some of the pictures we had, you notice people are out there cleaning barrels in the driveway. They're cleaning wine barrels in the driveway. That is part of the parking space of their 26 spaces. Whatever comes out of those barrels goes into the surface drains that are there in the parking area and goes out to the bay. That wouldn't happen if everything were an enclosed building, as I read the ordinance to require. So that, that's the main problem with that. There are obviously other things that go with it, but we've touched on those. The other, the other problem, the biggest other problem, is the parking situation. People being people, there is parking right there that they see. And we're not talking just on weekends. During the day, people come over. It's easy for them to park there instead of going to somewhere else. I understand and we're not, we're not quibbling with the, with the city as far as the number of parking spaces. But let's be realistic. You know and I know that sometimes, even though there are, say, 20 allotted spaces, somebody is using them for something else. The, whatever event or whatever is going on, maybe everybody drives his own car instead of carpooling. So all of a sudden, you have more cars than the parking that is available. It's very easy to park close to it. I know from experience with some of the property owners, they've had the same sort of things happen with the 24-hour fitness across the street. It's just people are going somewhere, hey, here's a parking place. Let me park here. And then it puts the onus on Mr. Margiata or his tenants to try to do something so that they can park there and the tenants, clients and customers can park there. I don't think it is too much to ask to have a requirement that the applicant notify the city and adjacent property owners, if they want it, when they're going to have one of these events. Notify them advance. It gives people a chance. Maybe we can do something else. That was a requirement that was in the cup before this request for modification. That went away. We also don't think that for a major event, that it is any sort of an inconvenience for the applicant to hire an attendant. All we're talking about is one person who may have to wander up and down the parking area for a few hours on a day just to make sure that if we see somebody coming in, parking there, that those, that couple doesn't come over and walk into the winery. All they have to do is bring it to their attention. We're not talking about some extreme requirement that's going to damage the Chirichillo's business. We don't have any problem with their business. Fine. Mr. Margiata is in that same situation. He likes to be able to use his property, but he is trying not to do anything to interfere with the other people. That isn't the case with the situation that has been going on now and which will increase with these new allowances for events and so on. Sure, the business is getting started now. It hasn't been too much. If it goes the way they want it to, there are going to be more of these events. But notifying the city and Mr. Margiata, all they have to do is they have it on their, on their email list. Somebody punches a button in two minutes, yeah, we've got an event scheduled for such-and-such on such-and-such a day. Mr. Chirichillo has tried at times to help things out. I think Mr. Margiata can tell you, yeah, he roped off the parking area at points so people wouldn't park there. All that meant is Mr. Chirichillo or Mr. Margiata's tenants couldn't get in there because there's something there keeping people from parking in there. It's, it's a problem. Mr., believe me, we're not going to have any problem if he wants to put some signs up there to try to help keep people out. I mean, that's, that's fine, but having an attendant there when they have one of these functions where it is not a bust-in function, I don't think that's much of a requirement for what the city is allowing them to do there. Mr. Margiata, actually, some of the things that came up here, Mr. Margiata will disagree with, but I don't think now's the time to do it. We've got some information in our appeal and so on. But there, there's been, there have been some problems in the past. We want to get rid of those. I'm sure the Chirichillos do. All we're looking for is some reasonable requirements having to do with the benefits the city is giving to the Chirichillos.
Do either of you have questions? Okay. I wanted to make sure I understood. You were talking about people parking over there. And I'm guessing that you're talking, I don't know Gavin, if we can go back to one of the overheads that shows the property. So I, I know exactly where you're talking about, so I'm not visualizing the wrong thing.
Chair Clapper, this is the Chirichillo property and then I can also take you to, did you want the overhead, the Google Earth image? Was that more helpful?
Yeah, let's go to that. Yes, that's, that's more helpful. So are we talking about the lower area?
What happens is, is that people, people come in here, here's where, here's where the door is. Here's where the parking is over here. It's very easy for them just to go up to the top, the, basically the east side and say, oh, here's some parking over here. Turn in there and park. And what's going to happen is, yeah, here's, here's where... And what's going to happen is, yeah, here's where they're being directed to park. They're being directed to park over here. My mother-in-law is elderly, if I told her, let's go here, I'll meet you there, but you have to park over here, that's not going to happen. That's too far for her to walk. A lot of people, they won't be, we don't have a problem with that. All we're asking is, hey, let's just have an attendant there, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So, but what you're saying, that there's a parking issue, is that one, that one building that's across from the upper portion of Domenico's Winery? Then is that, that those tenants, then, that people are parking in their places?
No, no, the tenants we're talking about is Marjata. That's the one.
Right, but they're parking in the...
You could just use this as your pointer.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, right in there, is that the area we're talking about?
Yeah, can I help out here a little bit?
Yes, please do.
Is that on the property?
Yes.
Okay. All this back in here, is our parking lot. The gate that Mr. Chirachillo was talking about, goes, is right, approximately right here at the end of that point, okay? There's no parking allowed, anywhere down through here, because it's a fire access to the back. This parking lot right here, where this line is going across, that is not the property line. Our property line is up against, what we call the Gazaboto Building. Bud Gazaboto's since, was deceased, but his heirs taken it. So these cars right here, that's actually on our property. And what happens here, is they come in here, and just like Mr. Ribble says, it's very convenient just to pull them in here. This parking lot is leased by Siemens Corporation, which is in this building right here, and it's leased seven days a week, 24 hours a day. They run vehicles at night, they have a service company, it's actually used to be owned by US Filter. Siemens has bought them out, like everybody else, and, but they do service contracts, and they come in and out of here at nighttime, and on weekends. Back here, is the same thing, there's three tenants back here, and they also come in and out here at night. As early as four weeks ago, this parking lot was full. We're under contract with Able Towing, our tenants came in here at 10 o'clock at night, couldn't get in, and they had to tow out four cars. This was just in the middle of all this going on. So there is no controls. Even though Mr. Chirachillo says it's going to be controlled, and the signs put up, it doesn't happen. And the last thing we want to do, is pull somebody's car out of there. You know, it's a terrible feeling, when you come out of having a nice event, and a nice evening, and having a $500 tow bill looking at you in the face, nobody wants it. But on the other hand, you know, we can't have people parking back here, it's a liability issue. You know, as far as blocking it off, and they've done that, without our consent, they've come back here and put stall horses and ropes, and the same thing here, and blocked it off. And again, our tenants come in there, are they going to get out and move them? That's not right. We have a right to use our own parking lot. I'm glad to see they have all this, I think this is great, it's going to be a big improvement. I think, though, they do need somebody out here monitoring vehicles, so they don't go back here and park. You know, that's all, pretty much, you have to see on the parking. You know, as far as this trailer goes, I want to give my little two cents here on this. Moving this trailer back in here, and I want, like Gavin, if you could do me a favor, well, we're going to come back to that. I want to come back to the picture you had up here a second ago. Putting this trailer back in here, is actually compounding the problem. When they're doing this bottling operation, which you're not seeing, there's forklifts going up and down, there's 60-foot semis back down the driveway, they've got pallets out there, and they've got cases of boxes, you know, spread out around here, and what's going to happen is, all that operation now, is going to take place, this part of the building is leased out, I believe, if somebody can correct me if it's not, but I believe it's leased. So this operation here now, is going to come out here, and come down this driveway, and come into here. So now we're going to have forklifts, and trucks and everything going back and forth, down this ingress and egress easement, and that's all that easement is for, is ingress and egress. Okay? So if that's going on, our tenants trying to get out of here are not going to be able to get out. Right now, when they pull a 60-foot truck in here and park it to one side, that kind of works, you know, because you can get around it. If they pull it back here, back in here further, it's not going to work. There's just not going to be enough room, to allow that to happen. So if they were planning on putting this trailer back here, and everything's going to come through the building, I guess that works, but certainly not going to work coming down this driveway. And I don't know how else they're going to get there.
If I could interject, that's one thing that would be a real possibility, if you're insistent on having a trailer, is make access from where the trailer is. There's a door back there, if you look at the plans that were submitted by Mr. Chirachillo, there's access to the building back there. If they're going to have the trailer back there, if you allow them to do that, and have it fenced in, make the access come in through the building, which is very close, instead of coming all the way down that driveway, which is, the area they're coming down, is right where their parking spaces are. So if they have something going on, and their people are parked there, it's going to be real difficult to get a whole lot done in there. So if you said, well, we got to let them have the trailer, well then, fine. If that's what you do, then you ought to have some sort of a restriction, so that they have to access the building near the trailer, which, there is a door right there.
You know, as far as this complaint about somebody complaining, anonymous complaint, my complaints are not anonymous. I give my name every time. So I'm glad to hear it was anonymous complaints, because it's not me. It's an ongoing issue. This trailer is a big concern. As far as the noise goes, I've never complained about noise. I don't have a problem with noise, but honestly, I've never heard of noise. It's the stench from the grapes, it's the juice running down the gutters. You can actually see, if you go back here, where this, they parked this dumpster, it has leaked so much, that it has taken the surface of the concrete, you can actually see where it's dripped down the ground, burnt a hole in the asphalt from the sugar, and has actually eroded the top of the concrete off, from the juice running down the driveway. Okay? So I'm not exaggerating, drive out there and look at it. Unfortunately, I took some pictures, it doesn't do any justice, but you can go out there and physically see it. I think the business they have there is fine, I have no problem with it. I have no problem with the venues at night. I have no problem with any of the people, I don't hear them, our tenants don't hear them. The trailer, and that nuisance, and the parking in our parking lots, is an issue. And that has to and will be dealt with, I have to. I have people back there, that are renting those buildings, and I have an obligation in RLEs, to give them what they rented. And part of that's peace and quiet, and access to their property, to their space. All I have to say.
Okay, do either of you have questions? At this point, at this point in time, if the appellant?
Not at the moment.
So, it sounds like what you're saying is, that you would actually prefer the trailer to be left in the location it's currently in. If there's to be a trailer there, you would prefer to have it where it currently is, rather than having it in the back?
If it comes down to that, and they're going to fence that in, unless I want to ask Gavin to go back to the parking plan that he had there. I believe, as Mr. Ribble believes, I've read the code. It talks about being inside a building. I own many properties throughout San Carlos. I am pounded, every time I come in here for a permit, and to comply with parking requirements, building requirements, I know it very well, I've been here my whole life in the city. I've built many brand-new buildings in the city. I'm very aware of that. And to allow something like this to happen, you're just opening the door.
And when you say, allowing something like this to happen, you're talking about treating this as a enclosed building, is that...
Yes.
Am I interpreting that correctly?
Absolutely no reason in the world, that that bottling plant cannot go in that building. If it's a hardship, that trailer is eight feet wide, I don't know, 30 feet long, couple hundred square feet, less, and do it properly, like everybody else in this city does, I don't see where the problem is. He's benefiting by renting out space in the back, so maybe he might not rent out the full space, maybe he might have to utilize another couple hundred feet of his building. But there's absolutely no reason, that trailer has to be out in that parking lot. It's on operation, and there's no sanitary, there's no handicap access to it, there's no fire sprinklers in it, there's no ingress and egress required by codes, there's one door in, it might be two. Okay? There's no seismic bracing on it, it's sitting up on stands. How in the world can we say this is a building, that you can put people in to work, and it meets current codes? It absolutely does not meet a current code. It might meet something, it's like a job trailer. When we pull job trailers on projects to construct a job, it's there on a temporary permit. Very, very limited, and it's gone. But that's not the case here. This is, he's running the business out of this trailer in a parking lot. And if Gavin can please bring me up the plan showing the parking, I want to discuss that just a little bit, since we're looking at... That one, Russ?
Yeah. Gavin, I'm just, I'm going to assume, are we counting these here as, let me get my, are we counting these as double parked?
Yes.
Okay, are these all parking spaces?
No.
What's all this? These are not parking spaces.
Not counted for dark traffic.
So what we're counting is down here. And what's these hash lines here? Is this a driveway? Just a driveway?
The parking plan that they showed, they were trying to get as many spaces on the site, without having to have as many shared parking agreements. So the site plan that they have there shows parking behind, the 90-degree parking, which is not allowed, so the staff report doesn't count that. It's just, the 46 spaces are just the spaces that are perpendicular to the building, and then the 12 tandem spaces at the end of the building, where they're proposing to do the fencing.
What is this right here?
That is where the original sign was, it said Domenico, they put it on the roof, and that's a drive-through from curb cut to curb cut. So they're just showing a representation, that you could put two spaces there, which is, I think the intent really was to have pick-up and drop-off there, so...
Okay, right here, we have an easement, right in front of that building, for a sign. So we can't, just so everyone's always aware of that. And if we have parking here, how they project, for these, I assume these buses are going to pull in this curb cut right here, and then drive down through here, and supposedly drive off? Is that the intent? Are the buses going to unload on Industrial Road?
We hadn't specified, I mean, there's a variety of opportunities for the buses to either pull in and back out, as Mr. Chirachillo was mentioning, like the semis do, to pull up on Industrial Road, or to pull through that section, Russ, where you're saying you have a sign easement?
Yeah.
With the two spaces?
I understood in the meeting, not to cut you off, and I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I understood in the meeting, you know, a couple months ago, that the intent was to come off Industrial Road, pull in the front, go over here, pull in the front right here, and drive out this way, onto the prescribed ingress, egress easement. But he's showing parking all through here, the bus can't pull through here. You're certainly not going to unload them on Industrial Road. That's not going to work. I mean, I don't know, maybe, something could say they're in direct traffic. And again, it's at night, it's not an issue for us, it's during the days.
So when you said the issue is during the day?
For the buses.
For the buses, okay.
Parking is an issue, day, night and weekend, due to the tenant's situation.
You know, we have dumpsters all piled up out here, there's city ordinances that discuss dumpsters, they're not being addressed, they're supposed to be in an enclosed area. That code was passed a number of years back. We're required to do that. Where's the dumpster enclosures then, on their plans? We're required to have all our dumpsters in behind, anything that goes in for a new use from it, has to be closed in. All their dumpsters are sitting out in the parking lot. Why? Why isn't it being imposed on them?
Gavin, is there any information from a staff perspective?
No, I mean, I understand, yes, I understand Mr. Marjata's concerns, and we echo them too, from a planning standpoint, if the bus couldn't come through. I'm looking at the site plan, and I don't have a way to call up a live Google Earth image, but a bus, like a trailer or a semi, is only, can only be eight feet, four inches wide, I think, by law. So there really only needs to be a space, or a space and a half, at the end there, for a bus to either pull in or drive through, to drop off. So the question about an easement for a sign, would be a different story altogether, we're not familiar with that, it's not something we reviewed, in either the materials we received to date, from either the applicant or the appellant.
Actually Gavin, it is, we sent in a, the plan I sent in, along with my letter, has the easement called out on that plan.
I stand corrected, it was on that title, plot plan with the property lines on it, but it wasn't spelled out in the narrative, that there was an entitlement for a sign there, so. And there's also the ability for a bus to pull in and back out, it's what bus drivers do. But the intent would be that there would be sufficient space between curb cuts for a bus, or a vehicle, or vehicles to pull in and out, if they were doing valley parking. And again, it would be the dedication of a space, or a space and a half, for the minimum width.
So I see here on this, where it points out the sign easement, and just to the, and going to the...
East.
South of that, or east, or going towards San Jose from there, there's four parking spaces identified, which I guess would be in that area, that they're talking about there being the bus access.
I have to admit, I'm assuming those spaces are not being used, because I believe that's exactly where a bus would be pulling in.
Okay, so I can see where the sign easement is located, and depending on where the last parking space, running along the side of Domenico Winery would be, that would probably dictate more whether there's vehicle access, but I'm not in a situation to be able to say that, based on just looking at this right now. So I would say that's...
Then, the other issue here with this plan, not to, you know, they're required X amount of people, 250 people, 200 people venue, requires X amount of handicap spaces, that are not even shown on here, it has to have handicap to the front door. Current building code calls for a walkway, from their building, in front of the building, down to the city access, down to the city sidewalk. That's not shown. That's in your latest building codes, that have been passed and approved. So they have no access here for handicap, they have no handicap parking shown, they have no walkway shown. How's all this work? I'm glad the planning, you know, is staying as great, but there's a lot of issues here that need to be addressed, and they're not being addressed.
Okay, any other comments, that you wanted us to take into consideration? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there anyone else here who wanted to speak, yes, would you like to, would you please come up to the microphone?
I just want to make a comment.
Please state your name again.
Dominic Chirachillo.
Thank you.
I don't want to go to war with my neighbor, in front of the commission, or any time. I don't agree with what he's said, and there is handicap parking, it may not show it on that map, but there is. You can go by there tomorrow and take a look, and there is a walkway. We provided for that, when we moved into the building, it was required, we did it. Now if there's an additional requirement, we'll do it. In reference to dumpsters, his dumpsters are on the side of his building, along with pallets, et cetera. I don't want to go this way, but if I have to, I will. I have photos of Siemens trucks parked in the driveway, all hours of the day, loading and unloading, and I'd be glad to share them with you. There's also been spills from the filters, and I picked up a bag of parts. I really didn't want to go this route, but I guess I should submit this information. I'd be glad to address any specific questions, or any of the issues that Mr. Ribble and Marjata brought up. Thank you. It's a little neighborhood, Mr. Marjata's an absentee neighbor. Mr. Marjotta is an absentee neighbor. My wife and I are on the property a minimum of five days a week. We take pride in what we do. We try to keep everything under control. Things sometimes are not perfect, and we do the best to run a good business and try to keep things going. So if you have any specific questions in reference to Mr. Marjotta's concerns, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
I do.
Do you have questions?
Sure.
Now? Okay.
Absolutely. I don't know if these have already been asked of you by staff or have been considered, but why not have your bottling unit inside your building? I think that's a fair question to ask.
Yeah, it is. Right now, our space, we have space constraints internally. We do have a tenant. The economic conditions that we've had to live with in the last three or four years have been rough on us in business. To give up space right now would be asking tenants to move out. I'm not saying that down the line I can change. I'm open to that, but right now, I need the rent from my tenants. I live with situations in that little driveway that I don't complain about. And, you know, everybody's trying to make a living. Let bygones be bygones, and I don't think the complaints that Mr. Marjotta have are that severe. I understand his concerns about parking. We've done everything we can, and we will continue to do that. We haven't had a chance to put the signs up. We made several attempts to different parking arrangements. I apologize that we haven't have an updated plan for you to review. In reference to his sign easement, it's a five-foot by seven-foot sign easement, and there's still plenty of room to get past his easement to where trucks, buses, cars can get by. We have alternative ways for the buses to enter. We can have our, if it's a daytime event, we can have all our employees park at the rear in the stack parking, have the bus pull up onto our existing parking, rope it off. They can unload there and load there. Not an unreasonable situation.
Okay, so on your plan, it says future tenant space, is that the space you're talking about, or is that included in the 4433 for Clo d'La Tech?
I don't have that exhibit with me. Do you have that, so I can refer to it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, Clo d'La Tech, its lease was expiring when we submitted this. They just renewed their lease. They're in the process of building their own winery, but at this point in time, they're there indefinitely. So that's why I'm saying things may change as time goes on, but right now, they're tenants. I need the rent, and I would probably try to re-rent it when they vacate because financially it makes sense for us to have rent.
Okay, so on this map, you see in the lower left there, it says future tenant space, 2553 square feet?
Right. That's what Clo d'La Tech is occupying.
They are occupying that. So that's included in the 4433?
Right. They're actually occupying the catering kitchen area as well. That's a future space that we intend to occupy and use to enhance our business.
Is there, so another question I had related to that bottling unit. For the times that you're actually bottling, would there be, because that seems to be, I guess, the times where it's most egregious as far as the impact goes, there's an impact from a noise and activity standpoint, is there space inside of your warehouse for those 20 days to, or your facility, to have that in there and then have the unit outside as outdoor storage? It's not a building. You're not going in there the other 340 days a year, right?
No, it's basically sits locked up.
Right. So on the 20 or so days of the year that you're actually doing bottling, have you considered moving it inside your building?
At this point in time, no, we haven't. It's.
Gloria's going to talk to this.
I'm at, so there's 20 days out of the year. It could be 15, it could be 25, 20 days.
Last of minutes.
They don't happen consecutively.
Right.
So we could bottle wine in June for a day and then not bottle it again, you know, maybe in August. So it doesn't happen consecutively. So we can't take that trailer and move it in and out every time we're going to use it, just because of the way that it has to be secured with the blocks.
Levied.
Levled. You know, there's, what's the cost of the bottling line in there? It's very.
$250,000 machine.
Piece of equipment. It's very temperamental. Every time you change a bottle and put a different shaped bottle in it, you have to readjust everything. So to move that trailer in and out every time we were going to bottle, it's just inconceivable. You know, it has to stay in one spot. It's not something that you can do that. It's not set up like these mobile bottling lines that are tractor-trailer, 40-foot, 18-mil tractor-trailer units. This is a small unit that come into a place, they level down, and they're there for a day, and then they leave. So this is something we use periodically, and it's not consecutively. So we couldn't keep doing that.
Okay. So I see where staff is, I think I see where they're going on this, at least the reasons why.
Right. And where it is currently now, Mr. Marjotta said that, I believe I heard him say, he would even rather it even stay where it is right now. Where it is right now, I don't know if you want to put one of the plans up, but right next to it is the roll-up door into the winery. So that is where the forklift would come out, makes a 45-degree turn, drops the pallet with the empty bottles right at the bottom of it. It's not going back and forth up and down the driveway as he says. When the bottles go in, they come out, they're filled, they pick that pallet up, they're going right back into that overhead door. So there are not trucks going up and down when the bottling is happening.
Well, can I also address that? Because the way our parking is, and if you saw, we tried to show perpendicular spots behind the other spots, there's enough room to drive behind cars my forklift. I do it all the time. And so I don't have to get in the roadway, even if we were to go up and down the driveway with a forklift. The forklifts are used by Siemens every day to load and unload their stuff. They go in the driveway, they unload trucks. It's.
I don't want to even try to address those. That's a separate issue.
We don't want to go there.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, I have the ability to stay on my property. You know, I may have to go, there is a speed bump there, I might have to just avoid that, but I'm not going up and down blocking traffic.
Okay. Which brings me to my next question regarding traffic. And I guess this is another question that I think is probably a fair question, and I know money's probably an issue with it, but why don't you have someone monitor traffic for your events as far as the parking? It'd probably be just one person in the parking lot just directing them, saying, yes, no, get out?
Many times, Dominic and I are out there ourselves because even though, you know, like I go downtown and I can park in San Carlos and I get my car towed away or taken because I didn't see the sign that says unauthorized vehicles will be towed. Mr. Marjotta has signs on his property already that say that. We have had, where people have gone and parked there anyway, they see them, they come into the event, I will tell them, we make an announcement, if you park in, and this is where the most, where a lot of part of the problem is, is this little section between the two buildings for Siemens. If you've parked there or gone behind that fence to the back, you will be towed, move your car. Because, and they're like, but it's after hours, it's closed, nobody's back there. I said, it doesn't matter, you need to get your car out of there. So we do the best we can. Many times, we are out there doing that. And prior to the signs that you have there, we have like, what do they call them, A-frame signs, that instead of, we did at times at night after 5:00, at 6:00, that area between Marjotta's and the front building, put, you know, caution tape so that people didn't go in there. All the Siemens employees were gone, and we did that to alleviate them being towed because they don't care if they're towed, it reflects on us, you know. We have done that. Since doing that, we then went to a little A-frame sign so the people see it right in front of them, do not park here, you will be towed. And then we put another A-frame sign right at the front of that yellow point there that tells them additional parking there or there, plus, we've already told you about the maps. But there are many times that we are out there doing it ourselves.
We would consider having someone there. I don't think it's something that would have to be a person there at every event. I think there may be something for the larger events. I don't think it'd be required for.
Is there a number of people that, where you'd say, hey, we anticipate X number of people, we probably should get someone there, or is that?
Absolutely. Just like the other night with the properties. It was like, all right, they're going to be driving here, 200 people, figure two per car. You know, it would be best, it would be in everybody's best interest if you went for valet parking. No problem. It was a piece of cake.
We instruct our main salesperson to recommend it on a regular basis. In fact, she just booked another party, and they're going to use the valet service.
The reason I bring up a person or some other methodology other than the caution tape, although that's well-intended on your part.
It didn't work.
I'm going to take a guess, say that Mr. Marjotta doesn't want that because he is renting out his property to people who expect it, even if they don't use it, but very infrequently.
Exactly.
But it's their right to be able to use it and not have impeded flow to it. So I understand that.
Absolutely. That's why we stopped doing that, and we put a sign out there so that it doesn't block access. It just says, you're not winery, don't park here.
And we haven't posted the new proposed signs yet because we're still in this holding pattern.
You're an optimist, I like that, about people following the signs.
Well, they're the help signs.
Yeah.
You try.
That's all I have.
You try.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, I have a couple of questions for staff here. So what are the current rules for outside manufacturing?
Excuse my hoarse voice tonight, but I'll try and kind of put us where I see this application. This is an existing use permit that's been approved for this site. It's been in effect since 2004. The three issues raised on the appeal are the bottling trailer, the waste disposal, and the parking in special events. So the first with regard to the bottling trailer, the prior zoning, although it does say that manufacturing and fabrication must be inside a building under the old zoning, the new zoning does not have that limitation, or under the, this application was brought in under the old ordinance, as I understand it. However, under the old ordinance, you could have outdoor manufacturing fabrication with a use permit. And under the 2004 conditional use permit, item number 12 talks about the sound generated by the crushing machine and bottlers shall in no event exceed 64 dBA, et cetera. And this condition's largely repeated as number 18 in the new revised conditional use permit. So it's, although it seems to be an issue and it's causing some problems apparently on, or at least it's alleged to be causing some problems, it's legally there now. It was allowed under the 2004 conditional use permit, so it's largely irrelevant to say that the planned manufacturing zoning doesn't allow that type of use because we allow it pursuant to a use permit, and it's there and it's legal. And there is some fine tuning, I think, intended to make it a little bit more compatible in condition 18. The second item is the waste disposal. I think there's a pretty strong condition in the new modified use permit, number 16, that talks about that. There are other avenues of enforcement that the city would have other than the use permit, but we're, I think staff is intending to document that so that if that, the very detailed condition, number 16, is violated, we'd have the additional remedy in addition to the health and safety code and the county environmental health and all the other avenues that could enforce this, we'd have the additional remedy of a revocation proceeding through the use permit. So I think it's a.
Before you move on in that, trash enclosures, are they typically required in these locations? And if they are, why are not both companies required to have them?
Yeah, Commissioner Marsters, I spoke with a building official. Actually, this section of the municipal code, chapter 18146, specifies that the building officials in charge of determining when a trash enclosure is required, and it's based on evaluation of improvements to the building. So I had a chat with our building official, and he showed interest in maintaining his review authority over when the trash enclosure should be required based on upgrades or valuation changes to buildings. So.
Okay.
And I know you may have other questions, but I just want to kind of put us back to where we are. I think the issue that we've heard a lot of testimony tonight is about the events. The initial amendment to the use permit, you might recall, was to loosen up some of the requirements on notifying for events and to legalize and document the off-site parking agreements to try and mitigate, or at least to include those provisions in the use permit. So you've heard a lot of testimony about that, and I think Commissioner Dooney's asked some relevant questions about having valet or some other enforcement mechanism. I consider that to be sort of outdoor and directing of the parking. And you know, if that's something that, remember, keeping in mind that this is an amendment to the existing use permit. So if that's something you need in order to make the finding to approve the use permit, and there's two findings in the staff report, I think that's something that you could develop. But I think the first two, of course, it's up to you to make the findings, but the staff, I think, has gone in great detail to try and address the first two concerns. One, I think, again, as I said before, the bottling trailer, it's already permitted, and I don't think it's relevant to say that it's not allowed in that zoning district when we actually have a use permit for it. The waste disposal, we're not only adding a condition, but we also have other remedies under our code or to, and complaints can be made to county environmental health. It's true that we do not want any kind of material that could be considered impudent going into the storm drain or into the creek. And, you know, there's a whole, that would be a severe violation that could be subject to criminal penalties. We don't put that in our use permit because it's an enforcement, a different enforcement mechanism, but those are definitely available. And, you know, the bottling, the person who's bottling or the operation really needs to be careful about that, and I'm sure they're aware of that. So I think we come back, really, the issue that you have before you is, is the parking adequate from these parking, off-site parking arrangements? Is there enough of a problem that you need to add some conditions to enable you to make the finding for the change in the events?
Thank you. Commissioner Marsters, did you have any other questions?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm okay with that. Thank you.
No other questions?
No more questions? Okay. Are we ready to make a motion to close?
Before we make a motion to close, the one thing that I have to disclose is that I have actually attended one of these special events before. So just in the interest of letting everybody know, I have actually attended one of the special events, so.
Is there anyone here who hasn't already spoken or would like to speak again before we close the public portion of the hearing?
Going back to this dumpster issue, and Mr. Churchill is correct, there's dumpsters outside our building in 1661 that belong to Siemens as well as pallets. We are currently 99% done and renewing our lease, and that is definitely on the address of issue. And the dumpsters are being removed and placed inside the building per building codes that. that would be required and off that driveway area. We couldn't do much with it in the last five years because it was not in their lease, but it's in their new lease. That will be taking place on March 1. That will be gone. Also, on that particular property, on that particular building, 1661, there is no area that allows for an outside dumpster enclosure as there is on Mr. Chacillo's area. If you drive by, you'll see that. Okay? So I just wanted to clarify that. Second thing, I am not an absentee landowner. I have over 20 tenants in San Carlos, and I am well and live. This is the only one problem child I have, and it needs to be addressed. And as far as that trailer goes, they themselves said it's a portable trailer designed to be transported to facilities for the day to make wine. So it can't be that difficult to move that trailer in and out when it's not, does not really have to sit there all year round so they can bottle wine 20 days out of the week. It's a portable trailer that can be moved. They've said it themselves, it's designed to go to events for the day. And I, as my intention, understanding when the first original use permit was applied for, and I could be wrong here, but I think I was right, that it was a temporary situation, a temporary deal. And now you're saying, well, it's kind of a permanent deal and it's been there. Two rights don't make a wrong. Two wrongs don't make a right. So it's not a hardship. It's a very thriving business. He stated it himself, it's taken off and it's going and it's growing. Then let's do business like we're supposed to do it and put the bottling plant inside the building where it belongs. That's all I have to say.
One thing I would like to just be sure, even though Greg and I may disagree on a couple of things here, having to do with the bottling plant, but if the commission is decided that they're definitely going to allow the outdoor trailer there, it seems to me, based on what both Mr. Chacillo and Mr. Margiata said, that instead of being in a fenced enclosure in the back of the building, it should be a fenced enclosure right next to the loading ramp, basically fairly close to where it is now, and have the fence there, do all of those things there instead of in the back of the building. And at least if that were your decision, it would probably provide less disruption and apparently would be easier for Mr. Chacillo also.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to actually ask. If you use on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chacillo, could you please come to the microphone? So based on the last comment about the trailer, if we decided to leave the trailer outside the building, it, I guess the question is, is it better for you to have it where it is right now and to put a fence around it where it is, or to move it around to the back and have a fence around it back there?
It would be easier to leave it where it was and fence it, leave it where it is.
Okay.
It's easier to access for movements.
Okay. Would a fence around it disrupt the use of it?
No, it shouldn't.
Where it is? Okay. Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Discussion. Who wants to lead off? Don't all jump in there.
Okay. I think the compromise with the trailer is probably to leave it right where it is and to put a fence around it. If it were really easy to move, they probably would be moving it and using it at other locations. I understand the balancing of that or the leveling of that trailer must be extremely complicated, even though it is supposed to be hauled around to other locations. I still think that getting it level is probably a significant issue. As far as a lot of the little things that I've heard, it sounds like issues going back and forth, and we're going to ignore most of those, or at least I'm going to ignore most of those. The big one for me is the parking and if there is a, whether to put a attendant out there, whether to have some sort of notification that was asked for at a level that's appropriate for the size. And I'd like to talk to the other commissioners about whether that's 100 people, whether that's 150 people, whether that's 200 people. And I don't necessarily know that or think that the city needs to be notified in some of these cases, but I think a courtesy notification to the surrounding businesses, when you got to a certain level of attendance at the special events, might be something that we want to consider.
Could you say that last part again, please?
Well, as far as parking, is there a level at which we want to consider notifying the neighboring businesses? And is there a level at which point we would want to require an attendant? And it could be at the 150, it could be at the 200-person level, but at some point the parking becomes a bit of a struggle for, and I've been at a special event where I walked in, the first thing they told me is to go move my car because it was obvious that I had parked it in a location where it was not going to remain there for very long. And so I know they're putting in the effort and I know they're trying to do the right thing. It's just at what point, if at all, should we make that a requirement?
Okay. So you're saying that with, we'll come back to those, but those, coming up with leaving the trailer in place and some definition about how number of people triggers managing the parking would allow you to make the findings?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Duvne, what would it take for you to make the findings?
I'll be shorter. Regarding bottling and waste, I can make the findings as outlined in the staff report. Regarding the parking, I think I can make the findings the way they are. They are doing what they can and they have some signs that I think if they go out in packets and they're doing what they've been doing and they put up the signs at these locations they proposed, I can make the findings. I just don't want to micromanage.
So you're supporting putting, moving the trailer per the staff report? Is that what you're saying? Or are you...
No. Well, this is fine. I should have said that. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. I thought that's what your point of view, I wanted to clarify that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So if the trailer is left in its current location, it looks like that takes up six parking spaces. Would that be about right, Mr. Monahan?
As they have it set up now, they park parallel to it and it's against the building. There's sufficient width on the property between the PL and the building that they just park nudging up to it.
Okay. So there would be no impact on the number of parking spaces available? Is that what you're...
I think the only impact would be if we looked at what type of fencing they do and what kind of clearance they need. And we hadn't ever discussed the clearance to fencing on the side there, but it would be something to look at. There is still a surplus of spaces, so if anything, we'd make a change to the amount of daytime events they would have without needing shared parking because that's really the only impact. Their day-to-day operations are overparked.
So in combination with any recalculation you do of how many spaces are required, you're comfortable the staff can...
Yes. And actually, the calculation is off. I was at six spaces and that's probably twice the width of the bottling trailer because I think it's a 30-foot-long trailer, so.
Okay. So yeah, I would agree that I'm fine with leaving the trailer where it is. It does, seems like it does align with functionally with the building and doesn't seem to actually be the source of problems, other than freeing up parking spaces. But if it looks like we can come up with an adequate number of parking spaces for typical daytime activities, then that would be fine. And my feeling is, parking management is always a tenuous area when you're dealing with varying numbers of vehicles. And I think it would be hard for us to define a number of people that would be the trigger. Well, I think there's a lot of other things that fit in with the solution, part of which is the valet parking. So would you say, gee, you have to have an attendant in addition to the valet parking? It's just like you were saying, Commissioner Duvne, micromanaging the business aspect of that and hopefully, putting on my Pollyanna dress or hat, I don't think Pollyanna wore a hat, that perhaps this could be a fresh start on coming up with, in a collaborative way, how to better manage the parking in that area, regardless how many people are attending events and for everyone to work together on it. So I think I would be fine with making the findings also. So then addressing Commissioner Marsters, addressing your thoughts about the parking management and a number of people triggering other things, what...
I can live with it either way. I was just looking to see if that was something that we were interested in doing. And I can live with the parking the way it is. The one thing that I didn't hear either of you mention was if the trailer actually stays where it is, should it have a fence around it? Whereas in the, when it was planned on being moved into the back area, it was going to be surrounded by a fence. And I just want to hear your thoughts about whether you want to have a fence if it stays where it is.
What do you think, Commissioner Duvne?
From an aesthetic standpoint, it may be worth it. I don't know if it's a conversation piece for the business to say, yeah, this is our bottling unit. I don't know. I don't know. And I don't know if there are setback issues either associated with that.
My concern would be from a safety point of view for being able to get in and out of the building as well as in and out of the trailer with a fence, because the fence that was proposed in the back was at a further distance from the trailer. And if this fence might be too confining to allow safety access in case there was any kind of an emergency or accident. And the other thing that was appealing about the fence in the back was in terms of concealing the...
Other.
All the other stuff that's back there.
Mm-hmm.
I still like the idea of having a fence in the back even if the trailer isn't there. But again, that's purely aesthetic. So any thoughts from staff? Or would you just leave that up to staff in terms of what it was fencing?
Commissioner Clapper, historically, you've given staff some direction when you didn't have a clear set of plans. If the idea is to provide a screening fence around, it doesn't necessarily have to go completely around it. It could be on two sides or perhaps three sides. Or you know, if it needs, if they need access to it, there can be gates so that they open and get out of the way. The idea is to screen it from the right-of-way or from other buildings. You could give that discretion to staff and that'd become part of the conditions.
And I'd be comfortable with that.
I like that idea. Okay. So that we're clear on what it is we're changing. Do we want to specifically identify which numbered items in the conditional use permit that would be changed? Or do we want to...
I think we can do it easier than that.
Okay. Continue.
I mean, I could make a motion and you can see what you think about that. And if it's adequate, we get a second or not, or it could die. I mean, you can go that way.
Please proceed.
All right. So I move out the plan, commission deny the appeal application of Russ and Debbie Margiata and uphold the decision of the zoning administrator with the following two exceptions. Regarding the location, it's proposed in this motion that the bottling unit remain at its current location. And the second exception has to do with aesthetics and fencing regarding that same bottling unit, that we have staff work with the applicant and staff has discretion to address that. And I'll continue with the rest of the recommendation here for the project located at 1681 to 1697 Industrial Road of San Carlos, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did that give an adequate level of clarification that you heard from us in that motion? Thank you. Okay. There's a 10-day right of appeal? Okay. Next item on the agenda. C, consideration of conditional use permit and architectural review for a new 60-foot-tall monopole and microwave communication equipment at 700 Crestview Drive.
Good evening, planning commissioner. My name is Gavin Monahan and I will be taking you through the application of the California Water Service Company for some internal communication equipment that they need to put on their property. Specifically, this falls under wireless antenna ordinance, and their request is to install a 60-foot monopole with two microwave dish antennas mounted to the top of it at 700 Crestview Drive. So planning staff handled this application similar to that of a wireless communication facility for the cell phone providers. However, in this case, it's a proprietary device. It's a proprietary installation. And the goal of Cal Water is to have increased and better communications between their sites. They have a strict requirement to know what level of the water and the tanks, what the tank level is, also to know if there's an overflow, if one of the tanks is stuck on the pump and the tank's overflowing. And as a result of overflow, they can face stiff fines and I think have in the past. So this equipment, the monopole and antennas are designed to help address those issues. So again, we handle this under our antenna ordinance because it looks and feels just like our standard 60-foot monopole antenna request. So the location is up on Crestview Drive. It's near Los Vientos Way in the corner of Crestview. It's on an existing Cal Water site. They have one tank at that particular location, some support equipment pumps, there's a pump house. There's also a county lattice antenna that you'll see if you went by there that handles or facilitates communications for the county. It's proprietary for them. They were not interested in sharing. That was our first question for staff, of staff to the applicant. Could you mount your equipment on an existing tower, which is in our preferred location group for our new ordinance? And the answer was no, that the county needed the antenna. And then also, there's a specific, this type of equipment, there's a specific line of site that's required. So the water tank site on 700 Crestview is going to be in communication with the site, I think actually in San Mateo. Cal Water's here tonight and they can correct me if I'm wrong with that. And they need to have a line of site communication so they can't be put at different altitudes on the pole like the cell phone carriers are able to do. So this necessitated them to install a new 60-foot monopole on the site. I would also mention that... I would also mention that this particular site, you notice there's a big gravel section just to the right of the water tank. There are plans to install a new tank here. There's two new water tanks going in, and this is one of the locations for it. We cleaved this application off. It was a separate application for the monopole and antennas from the application for Cal Water to install the water tanks. We wanted to review this one under the FCC shot clock, just to be on the safe side, and also because the water tanks are subject to sequel review and are going through environmental process now, and the wireless monopole and antennas are not subject to sequel review. So the applications are actually separate, but we treated them separately. Normally, we'd combine them, all things being equal, because it's easier for review and for conditioning the property. But in this case, you're going to see the two requests separately. So the general plan designation is single-family. It's zoned R1. The new zoning is RS3. Existing land use is water storage, and the surrounding uses are single-family residential, mostly large lot and R1 LD. Their request is for the 60-foot monopole and two microwave antennas. The antennas will be used for internal communication. One's mounted near the top, the top of the, probably the diameter, if it's close to the top of the 60-foot. The second one's midline mount is approximately five feet down on the pole. The pole's located in the back of the lot, as you're on Crestview, towards the, there's a single-family residence there. It's closer to that house than the rest, but it's actually the preferred location, because it's off Crestview, so it's driving down the street. On Crestview, you won't see it. Los Vientos, it's difficult, if not impossible, to see. We actually went all the way down to Best Court on a site visit, and you can just sort of see the top of the lattice tower poking through, and the two are somewhere heights approximately 60 feet. So putting it in the back of the lot is really the preferred location for it, because it'll screen it from the majority of the views that are found in that location. And there are significant views in that neighborhood. Because of that, we had, sorry, my wheel is moving too fast, and we had Cal Water do outreach. We asked them to conduct some neighborhood outreach. They had a meeting during the day and had the site open and send out an invite to the radius list that we use for Planning Commission of 300 feet. They didn't have any one attend, and we decided, and Cal Water also thought it was a good idea to have one not during the workday, because this was Monday through Friday happening. So they planned a follow-up, open-house site tour day on a Saturday, and I believe had no attendance as well. And they were both noticed. We, as are required of all Planning Commission and conditional use permits, we did a public notice 10 days prior to tonight's meeting and have not received any comments from neighbors concerned or happy or otherwise. So there was basically three sets of separate outreach, and we have not received any information as of 4:30 this afternoon. So the project request, on the left is the existing county communications lattice antenna, and on the right is the proposed monopole with the two microwave antennas on the top. Behind this tank, this is actually, tank is not here, this is the proposed tank, but behind this tank is a pump house, approximately eight or 10 feet high. It's like a CMU structure, and the antenna would be just to the end of that. And this, what you're seeing here in this cropped photo, is the proposed tank, the new proposed water tank. With that new tank, we will be, will condition the site for things like landscaping, any upgrades we need to do for impervious surfaces under MPDES, or any other types of noise-attenuating things for pumps, or changes to structure, or things of that nature. But in this case, they don't have a proposal. They're not asking for entitlements for changing any ground-mounted equipment, unlike the cellphone carriers that have the big boxes that need to be installed for transmitting the data. This is not the case for this Cal Water application. So it's just a monopole and antennas. There's a couple of project views that the applicants included. This is looking west per the, I use their directions that were actually on the plans. I think they're just slightly skewed. But looking west towards the site, if I can get my mouse down here, here is the existing tank. This is some of the equipment. I believe this is equipment that has equipment in it for the county lattice tower. Back, a little bit further back here is the pump house for Cal Water. And then this is the proposed view looking west, once the monopole is installed. There's quite a nice tree screening here, and again, not on this application, because with the proposal for the tank coming in and with the existing extensive vegetation, we did not require new landscaping. But with the tank landscape, with the tank proposal, they are proposing to add a tree, at least one tree in here. We were out at the site, and it is fairly well-vegetated, so one tree may suffice. Maybe they need a few more, but we'll handle those types of landscape screening when the tank is in front of you for entitlement. This is another set of project views, again, with the existing lattice tower prior to the installation of the monopole, and then after. So the zoning compliance and consistency, these all need to be met in order for you to find an approval tonight. And these are the required findings under our wireless section of 1818070A. And then the conditional use permit findings is required to entitle it with a conditional use permit. And the monopole is what needs the conditional use permit under our antenna ordinance. This is actually reviewed under our new wireless ordinance, and the major changes to our new wireless ordinance were giving a preferential site and review treatment to things that are non-residential areas and industrial or on buildings. And so you go through this checklist of sort of what's best down in the industrial area on a building, screened from view and more than X amount of feet from a residential, and then you move up the preferential list. But in this case, because it's proprietary and it's required on a Cal Water site, those preferential locations down on Industrial Road or by US 101 are not practicable. So it basically follows back to the entitlements and the reviews that you have seen previously for our cellphone or wireless antenna facilities. And then staff has a recommendation of approval tonight. I will leave this up, actually, with the formal motion, should you decide to vote on it and approve it tonight. And I am here to answer any questions. Also, are the applicant, David Hyatt, who's with On Air, and Cal Water, representative of California Water Service Company, are also here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We did, I always add one more thing. We did change a few of the conditions, just slightly, for ones that were not appropriate for, or not as applicable for the water company, as opposed to the cellphone carriers. Mostly the wording, because the cellphone applicants never own their property, so we have some things about getting permission from the property owner, and those, some of those requirements didn't make a lot of sense, since the applicant or the owner of the pole is also the property owner. It's probably really the only change that you'll see from the previous reviews that you've done.
Okay. Commissioner Marchers, any questions?
Just one or two. Is there a possibility that additional antennas could be co-localized on this pole?
Yeah, we would encourage that if an applicant came back and said, hi, we're sprint, and we'd like to put some antennas on the pole. I think it would be subject to the technical requirements of their monopole or microwave, and how far they need to be, and others in this room could probably speak to more technical answer for that. Steve's laughing. But yeah, we would encourage that.
Okay.
If you're leaning towards modifying a condition, I could also think that that would make sense. But it's in our ordinance that the co-location is a preferred thing, so it's, it didn't used to be built into our ordinance, and as clean as it is now, and now it's clearly built into our ordinance, so as a preferred way of handling a new site, we'd be to co-locate it on this monopole.
Which sort of leads me to my second question, and that is, why not a tree, a fake tree?
You know, we look at each application for aesthetics individually. We always talk about this after we had our first tree application, which has not been constructed yet. And I think it, sometimes it's the impact against the cost of that aesthetic improvement. Our code doesn't say thou shall always install a tree. It just talks about the best installation for aesthetics for the site. We could go back, and of course, aesthetics are very subjective. We could go back and look at some of the photosimulations. I think in this case, that an artificial tree might look more clunky there. None of these trees are Monterey pines. The artificial Monterey pines, they've done pretty well. Some of the deciduous trees are trying to do, the palm trees are so-so. But to get these wispy, thin-leaved eucalyptus, or whatever they are, that shape in an artificial monopine is next to impossible. So I think a big artificial Monterey pine plop there would probably look worse. And then also, we look at the impacts to the neighborhood and the results of neighborhood outreach and the community meetings that they had, and have not had any responses from neighbors with concerns of aesthetics. So I think those are the two things that drove us to our recommendation with the monopole.
My last question would be, would an artificial tree have an impact on additional antennas? If they were to potentially be co-localized on that, would an artificial tree have, allow less space for additional antennas?
You know, I don't know. I've seen someone 80 now that have, I think, three or, or not three, four or five stacked locations, that they're getting tall, 80 and 100 and 120 feet. Those would be taller than we would allow. On this one, I think conceivably, you could have another row of antenna, I think there's a five-foot clearance, correct me if I'm wrong, from the top of those panel antennas, so probably one more layer of antennas could go on there. Now whether, at that point, that would be a new application. So we would give a benefit that it's a co-location, but we'd still be in front of you, I think, and say if there's aesthetic impact that it would need to be mitigated. Again, I don't think, I think at that point, the antennas are going to be even lower in the tree line, and probably their requirement to put in an artificial Monterey pine there, we'd still, we'd still have the same impacts. It might look out of place. It might look larger and more dense and more clunky than the existing vegetation that's on site. And by that point, the antennas that are going to be on the monopole will be so much lower, they'll be even less noticeable from Crestview or Los Vientos or Best Court.
Okay.
But it would be an independent, it would be a whole new review.
Thank you.
That came through.
Commissioner Gibney?
Thank you. I also add that if the original monopole foundation and steel itself is not designed for multiple antennas and engineered for that at the beginning, it's not going to really matter. You got to do that upfront, so it doesn't look like, this is for their internal SCADA system. They don't, they're not anticipating anyone else going up there. They can address this, I'm sure. Maybe they've had other folks express an interest in it, but, you know, that's their deal.
Okay.
And then, the only other question I had was, and this has only to do with, we have two 36-inch microwave dishes up there, and my question is specific. In condition number one, any changes determined to be significant may require additional review by the Planning Commission. If they were to add or find a need for a third dish, would that be viewed as significant?
It could be, and that's a good question. Sometimes we, as the planning counter, encourage applicants to ask for more, so they could ask for three dishes or four dishes. We've seen this before in other applications, and then they have an entitlement for the four, they install two, and their writing entitlement for two more is in the backpocket. And that's something that I think makes sense, just from an efficiency standpoint, for this commission and for staff, and also for the applicant.
Right, and that's, I see the applicant's coming up, so that's the straight man question. Thanks.
Okay. Shall we hear from the applicant then, please?
Yeah, my name is Dave Hyatt, and I'm with On Air, and I'm representing Cal Water. I'd like to start off just by thanking staff for their support and help with this application, also for you as well for reviewing it. And my questions are, my comments tonight are really focused around answering and addressing your questions. And you mentioned a question about the monopine, and what Gavin said is actually correct. It would be considerably taller than the existing support structure that we're proposing. And they do, I've seen a number of them, and they don't look that attractive, actually. But in this case, what you don't see is also that the second tank that will be there, which will actually provide some additional coverage to remove any of that aesthetic impact. And actually, what you were saying as well regarding the structural aspects of the pole itself are correct. They have to be designed specifically for the intended purpose, so they're purpose-built, and all of that has to be done upfront. Not only just, not only the foundation, but the actual pipe or pole itself. So, and in terms of additional capabilities, that's certainly something that we would consider. We have not applied for that at this point, but would certainly be open to doing that. Co-location as well, that is certainly an area that we're open to. There is going to be that technical distance limitation, minimum distance limitations. And predominantly, the pole is purposely designed for its intended purpose, or intended targets in the surrounding San Mateo area. So the location for those antennas, the parabolas that we'll be using, is very critical. So anything would have to be either below it or above it, and you probably don't want anything above it. So that'd be just extending it. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to.
No questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any, ready to? Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak about this item on the agenda? No? Seeing none?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. How do you feel about being able to make the findings? Do you have any?
I'm fine.
Any concerns? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission approves the request of David Hyatt, representing Cal Water, for a conditional use permit and architectural review approval to allow a new 60-foot-tall monopole and two new microwave dish antennas at 700 Crestview Drive, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's a 10-day right of appeal. Next item on the agenda, consideration of a resolution concerning minor amendments to Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code to implement the intent of the recently approved comprehensive update of the zoning code. Staff report, please.
Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. The item before you this evening is some minor amendments to Title 18, and as you know, we just recently completed a comprehensive update to the zoning code. And whenever you do that, you know, we're starting to look at implementing that zoning code, and we found a few items that need some tweaking. So let me just walk through those with you briefly. The first item relates to exempting projects from the public noticing requirements that are more of a staff-level design review items. The second is exempting fences and rails from obtaining zoning clearance review when they're within that stream development and maintenance areas. And then finally, removing the new hillside density reduction table that was added into Chapter 18.12 relating to the hillside overlay district. So regarding the public notice requirement, we were very interested in adding some design review requirements to all exterior projects. That would include signage, exterior additions to single-family residences, so formalizing that that is a design review process. I think when that happened, a section was inadvertently added, or it may have been copied from another model ordinance by the consultant, to then also require a public noticing process. Some of our concerns with that public noticing process is it would delay the timing in order to approve an application. So right now, we can approve something at a staff level in a relatively short period of time. This is going to add at least 10 to 15 days to give that public notice timeline. The other item of concern is that these are really, you know, staff-level ministerial approvals, and when you have a public noticing requirement, that neighbor that receives the notice now maybe has an expectation that they can influence the decision, maybe we would deny it or make some changes. So I think our concern is the ability, then, and the expectation that would be out there with the residents. We currently do a courtesy notice for all second-story additions to make sure we're able to incorporate any input the neighbors have on that. We would continue to do that, and this also would not change any of the noticing requirements we currently have in place for the RDRC review items and for the Planning Commission items. It's just the very minor staff-level review items. And then the next item is that when we updated the stream development and maintenance overlay ordinance, it contains a much more detailed description of what is allowed and not allowed within that 20-foot setback corridor from the streamline. And it does prohibit, as we interpret it, the construction of fences or walls. Now, a lot of these creeks are located within people's rear yards, and so we want to allow the ability to construct a fence or a wall, so long as it doesn't require a building permit. So you could, with this table, have a smaller lot than the current subdivision ordinance. So our proposal is then to remove that table and to continue to rely on the slope density requirement we have in our subdivision ordinance that establishes the minimum for any new lot divisions. So staff does recommend that the commission adopt the resolution, and this is a recommendation to the city council to adopt those minor amendments to Title 18 to implement the intent of the approved comprehensive update to the zoning code. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Who wants to start off with questions? No questions?
It's kind of controversial. No, I'm good.
You're good? Commissioner Marsters?
Only one question. So it's actually on the second item, which is the...
Fences and walls?
The fences and walls. Is there currently any, so your proposal is to really have the fences and walls that are built not require a building permit. Is there any distance from the edge of the creek bank that is a requirement for those fences and walls?
There would not be in the zoning code. Gavin, do you know if there's anything?
So they could actually be at the top of the creek bank?
Right. They could not be in the creek bank.
They could not be in the creek bank, but they could be right at the top of the creek bank. Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking about that. Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just in honor of Mr. Marsters, a quick question regarding the actual wording on the motion. It seems a bit awkward. I don't want to have to make you speak, Mr. Rubens, but maybe you could address that. Aren't we giving, more specifically, aren't we just giving a recommendation that the city adopt?
I think the resolution makes the recommendation. So if that's the point you're making, the resolution itself has in the title, it's a recommendation.
Okay. So that's, okay. All right, that makes more sense.
Commissioner Marsters?
I don't know if that's, this is the appropriate place, but I was just a little worried about having the fences right up at the creek bank.
Top of creek?
The top of the creek bank, and whether there needs to be some sort of, I mean, at every other, everything that I've been through with a creek bank, we always have, you know, a couple of feet or five feet or something away from the creek bank. And I just, this sort of tells me that there's, you can build the fence right at the creek bank, and that bothers me a little bit. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about that or not. I don't have a problem with making the fences and walls not require a building permit, but the fact that there is no setback from the creek bank, even a couple of feet.
Yeah, and I think from a practical standpoint, most fences are set in a few feet. Obviously, in constructing it, you need to put in some kind of a footing to hold the post, and, you know, they need access and work to it. We do need to make sure that they don't undermine the creek, they don't alter the stream bed in any way. So from a practical standpoint, they're typically set in a few feet from the edge of the creek bank.
Okay.
Perhaps your question goes to the enforcement of that, though, right? I mean, how are you going to know? If it doesn't require a building permit, the city's not going to be involved. Is that fair to?
Part of that is trying to figure, you know.
Yeah. We do get a lot of calls. A lot of the property owners along the creek bank have been pretty well-educated recently because we've done a lot of cleanups, and, you know, we've really been out there to do a lot of education with those property owners. So they're pretty good about contacting staff and even having one of, somebody from our engineering department actually walk out there and take a look at it. Some of my experiences, they've been really good about contacting staff. And since they walk in the creek so often to make sure there's no obstructions, they would notice if there's any new construction too close that would impact the creek, and then they could then work with the property owner to modify that.
Okay.
I just see that question as whether you want an identifiable standard, or you want to rely on the practical considerations that someone building a fence would know you don't want to put it right up against the bank where it's going to be in danger of falling or being undermined.
Right.
Okay.
So what's the conclusion of that?
Well, let's do that during discussion.
Oh, okay.
There may be people that still want to, given the public hearing's still...
Maybe I could just clarify that we've historically allowed fences to be located as such, you know, close to the edge of the creek bank. So this is kind of going back to how we've been implementing the code for several years.
But with the added benefit of having a number of years of education regarding that area and how sensitive it is.
Okay. So is there anyone here who would like to comment during the public hearing portion of this item? Seeing none?
All right. Move to close public hearing section?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I can make the findings.
I can make the findings.
You can make the findings, okay. Well, I can make the findings. I would like to, on Exhibit A, item number four, the bottom of the page, I think that's Section 18.14.030 for the hillside, because that Section 18 dot 12 is, or not the hillside, for the stream side versus the hillside, is 18.14. And then the hillside is 18.12. Of course, I'm working off a draft version of the ordinance, so who knows? Maybe someone went and changed all the numbers. But I have that the SDM overlay district is in Section 18.14, and the hillside overlay district is Section 18.12. Look at that and... Okay, yeah, just make sure that the section numbers are correct. And just taking a quick look to see if I have any other questions noted here. So going back to that, that exact same item, number four, so what we're adding to the end of it is fences not subject to the issuance of a building permit shall be allowed. Clearly implied in that is that fences that do require a building permit would also be allowed, right? I just found it funny that it said that if they're not subject to a permit, they would be allowed, but if they are subject to a permit, wouldn't they also be allowed? So like, the special situations that we have listed in that section that's referred to 18.14, it lists a whole bunch of special situations where you would have to get a permit, which would be like a 12-foot-high chain link fence and... Let's see where that page is.
Which wouldn't be allowed along a creek bank, anyway.
Well, I guess...
What a...
Okay, so for a recreation area, fences shall not exceed 12 feet in high may be located around tennis courts, badminton courts, basketball or volleyball courts. I could certainly see someone having that at the back of their property.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't inadvertently excluding the ability to build these other types of swimming pool fences and security fences that apparently would require permits.
Yeah, I'd like to confirm what the staff member did the research and prepared the staff report, but it seems through the discussion, we don't need that reference to a building permit.
Okay, so I would just request staff to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Just so it doesn't create any problems for us down the pike.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my only comments, and subject to those being reviewed, then I also can make the findings. So are we ready for the motion?
No. Ask Mr. Marsters.
Mr. Marsters, are you ready to make the motion?
Yes. Want me to make it? Okay.
The ball is in your court.
I move that the planning commission adopt resolution. I move that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 2012-01 recommending that the city council adopt amendments to the Title 18 zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code based on the findings incorporated in the resolution of the planning commission for the reasons stated in the staff report with the added condition of allowing staff to work on the wording of the fencing. Is that...
I think we have double reference to building permit in there. So what we'll do is we'll correct the grammar of...
Correct, okay.
We also need to correct the section number.
We'll verify the section number.
If that's...
With the correction, with the...
There we go.
With staff looking at verifying the section number.
I'll second that.
Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I guess there's a 10-day right of appeal on that also?
Yes.
No, because it hasn't passed.
It has to go to the city council.
Take that back.
Then.
Okay. Reports, correspondence, and general information, report on recent city council actions.
Thank you. At the last city council meeting, the council adopted a resolution to form the Old County Road Underground District. So this helps us implement the East Side Connect project. So we'll be working with PG&E as well as our designer to get through, it's quite a long process, actually, to design and do the joint trenching and actually underground the utilities. But we've moved forward on the first step of that. And then the council also had some discussion and passed some resolutions on the dissolution of the redevelopment agency due to the recent decision on the lawsuit. And if you have any questions on that, our city attorney could probably best answer them. But we don't really have kind of that full impact determined at this point. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I would like to have everyone on the commission be able to hear more about that at a later meeting when everyone is present, whenever it would be appropriate to put on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Be glad to do it.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose it. Anything else from city council? Okay. Any comments or reports from the commission members?
Yeah, if I may, do we have any action items we could give the absentee commissioners? Maybe a new subcommittee to, or liaison activity?
I thought we could...
A couple, yeah.
Could they be in charge of refreshments for the next meeting?
Ooh.
When we have transportation and circulation here so that we can welcome that?
You're the chair. It's going to be a short night.
Okay, so...
We'll leave that for a future agenda item as well.
Right, very good. Okay. Any correspondence?
Covering the bases.
No correspondence?
No, thank you. Okay. Any other comments, reports, updates, current projects from planning staff?
I just wanted to remind you that your next meeting is Wednesday, January 25th, and as indicated, we have a joint study session with the Traffic and Circulation Commission on the Wheeler Environmental Impact Report. And again, we're not sure how that project's going to proceed, but we've completed the EIR, and it does make sense to move forward with the environmental impact report. That's a longer-term entitlement, anyway. And then we'll kind of evaluate after that if we move forward with the project components. Also, on that same hearing would be the continuance of the Carlos Club item. So that'll be on that agenda as well.
I have a question regarding projects. Yeah. That's why I said it was going to be a short night. For staff, what is the latest on, if anything, the transit village?
Yeah, I don't have an update. We can provide that at your next meeting.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Marsters?
Question about the meeting next time, is the Wheeler Plaza going to be the first item on the agenda, or is it going to be the...
Yes, we'd like to structure it so that the Wheeler Plaza is the first item on the agenda. We'd also like to take the traffic and the parking item first in your discussion, and then the Traffic and Circulation Committee Commission can adjourn to their meeting, and then you can talk about the other environmental items.
Okay.
So that's how we'd like to structure it. And then once you're completed with that, you can move into the public hearing on the Carlos Club item.
Okay. So is there a way to help that applicant for 612 El Camino manage what I'm sure will be an active participating audience as far as timing goes?
Yeah, well, I, we haven't, staff, we haven't really discussed it, but it seems that we might be able to break it up and do a special meeting and a continuation of this meeting for the, because you really are just continuing your regular meeting to the 25th for the Carlos Club item, and we could perhaps specially agendaize a time, a dedicated time for the other one. Just call it a special meeting while published two agendas. We'll work on that.
Yeah, I think that would make more sense.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's anything else, last countdown, okay. This meeting is adjourned.
Fantastic.